Right, we'll call the meeting to order. Approval of board meeting minutes, fact of rate, one twenty-four. There's been a motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of meeting agenda.
We did make a change to the board format. To adding under number ten, go to the order. We also had an addition of Wazda coming again, didn't have a discussion item. This week it was going to be, the original schedule in September was the CTE for with Christie Kershaw out of the area, we updated to last board meeting. So the discussion item actually opens that up. And with Wazda coming in, it kind of filled that discussion out.
I'll move for the approval of the meeting agenda.
I'll second it.
And a motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Consent agenda.
I'll second that.
And a motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Things to discussion item was the presentation by Heather Curl.
There, you see Heather in there. Hey Heather, you are here, I think you're just muted, and we're so excited for you to join us.
Oh, can you see me now and hear me?
Yes.
Perfect.
Wonderful, I'm so pleased, thanks for getting me right on the agenda immediately. Hello. I am Heather Curl, the Director of Leadership Development for Wazda. The agency that supports school board members, and I'm here with very exciting news. Because Elma was not only determined to be a Board of Distinction this year, but you earned the Small School Board of the Year distinction, so congratulations to your board. Any, any, and I have some follow-up info about that, are you interested in hearing that?
Sure.
Awesome, so we're just really excited to honor Elma and all the work that you've been doing, particularly for post-secondary students and just in general, it's really inspiring. And you'll be honored as a Board of Distinction at Thursday night's President's Dinner at Annual Conference. And then also as a Board of the Year on Friday at Annual Conference during the general session, so we hope that somebody, anyone is welcome and interested in coming. We also have a videographer who comes and creates a short video about the work of your district that we'll share during that general session on Friday, the twenty, uh, twenty-second. And the last thing is that we like to save the Board of the Year announcements, kind of as a not surprise, because I'm letting you all know now, but kind of to really elevate it and something to, to talk through at annual conference, so if you could not put out a press release and sort of talk to me yet, we hope to kind of save that for annual conference and then you can go wild after that.
Absolutely, and we didn't tell our board before the meeting, so everybody is digesting it now.
Yeah, I hope you're excited.
Very, that's, that's an honor, so thank you for, for coming to it tonight with this information, we'll definitely have representatives there.
Yay, we're so glad, so I'll take it offline and anyone can write me with questions and just have a great meeting and congratulations.
We will, Heather, we'll make sure to share your information with the boards if there are questions that pop up.
That sounds perfect, thanks so much for having me.
Well, congrats. As a surprise.
Okay. No public comments? Okay, unfinished business, we have discussion and approval of policy forty-sixty, distribution of materials first reading.
I just need to get there, so let me come on in a second. Sorry, it was all ready-to-go for Wazda that I didn't have it free loaded. This is going to be a, again, we agreed to do, we prioritize doing the four thousand series, this was kind of a basic update. I think I reviewed the last few meetings and looking for updates, so this is the just that what we decided to do, just the Wazda recommended policy changes.
I move for the approval of policy forty-sixty, distribution of materials first reading.
I'll second. It's been a motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. A discussion approval of policy forty-one-ten, Citizen Advisory Committees and Task Forces first reading.
Just kind of a language cleanup, this policy hasn't been viewed in November of two thousand five, and last updated in February of nineteen ninety-seven, it's not major changes, it's just some language changes from shall to will.
Move for the approval of policy forty-one-ten, Citizen Advisory Committees and Task Force first reading.
I'll second that.
It's been a motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion approval of policy forty-one-twenty, school support organizations first reading.
It's just updates with the RCW for, actually Jamie's favorite topic on It's just the more updated RCW.
I'll move for the approval of policy forty-one-twenty, school support organizations first reading.
Second.
Been a motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Okay, we got fundraiser for the class of twenty-two-six.
It's me, so apparently. Uh, it's just the normal taco fee that they do during the holiday bizarre.
I'll move for the approval of the class of twenty-two-six fundraiser.
Been a motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Okay, we have the, lost my spot, sorry. Uh, we have approval of the Viva Agreement for AA.
Yeah, this is just voted on by the, the entire association, far as board.
I'll move for the approval on the Viva.
I'll second it.
Been a motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, enrollment.
Oh, well, we are up in the month of October by about a twenty-three FTE. Primary areas in like twelfth grade and eleventh grade, so predominantly at the high school. As long as we're kind of maintaining that track, I think we're in a good position. Questions on our, it's like predominantly in our ALE numbers online.
Everybody good to move on? We'll move to good of the order. They have anything they'd like to share?
So this is our time? Alright, so we placed fourth in the spacing on the name of the Community Recreational Grant that we put in for. That actually puts us in a really good position, they only awarded the first two funded at one point nine million. But if the legislature approves the second pot of money in March, that would mean that there'd be another two million dollars available for the next project, I don't know how that process goes, but they relook, they will look into it again, it showed in March, and if the money's there, I mean we, we're in a good spot, yeah, because the first project that's in third is only like a hundred fifty-three thousand, and then it goes to the next big project, which would be well under the one point nine, so we're sitting in a really good place. And that's for the project for the addition of fifteen, uh, playing fields out here with lights behind the transportation building. So.
You've done a ton of work on that, Michael, and I really.
Thanks, I appreciate that, I couldn't have done it without Chris and Jeff's help, and there's, there's been a lot of people that have helped us work on this project, so.
Well, I well, thank you.
I know, I'm excited, but at the same time, holding my breath a little bit.
We're, we're close. The first person to knock, first person to knock it.
Well, I mean, if nothing else, it's definitely opened our eyes to what we can do and what, what, what the potential is, so if we do run into where we don't get funding for this, we're not going to stop there, we'll try to see if we can get some funding going forward, maybe we start a little bit smaller. And, and build up, but there's a lot of potential. And what we're finding out is there's probably potential to do other projects as well, we just have to start putting in for them, and it the more shovel-ready projects that we have, the easier it is, that's kind of what they're looking for, right, you have all your ducks in a row, you have all this stuff, and if we can do that, there's probably projects all over the district we could try to work towards, so.
I think a great partnership, part of why we landed forth was the partnership with Alma McClary Youth Soccer. And just that interest in ensuring that we're supporting our youth programs to, you know, ensure that we have our facilities open and available. I think the big thing was that, that Michael did a lot, he did the drone footage, he had the plans, thank goodness Michael's an engineer, so he could actually put it in an engineering way, but the biggest thing Michael brought to the table was is having those numbers to show number of ours, our, our youth community members being impacted. And, and the rate of impact and the fact that we had rate of impact numbers from Alma McClary Youth Soccer so available is why our application is so far.
Alright, thank you again.
I was just gonna say, homecoming grade in assembly, I thought it was the best, I mean the kids as far as the staging area, I got so many compliments about how polite the kids were, appreciative the kids were, it was just, and, and there were a lot of kids that came to actually help get their phones and stuff ready, but the assembly was amazing, the best attended assembly I think I can remember in forever, so just big kudos to Ms. Elliott and her team of kids and more than anything, the buy-in that they got from the student body at large, so.
I think it's a great opportunity to also thank Abundant Life Church, right, Abundant Life Church has done an incredible job, especially with the helicopter landing pad and proximity, so just Abundant Life Church being there, holding all of these bars, supporting our students, I think I saw Eric there directing traffic.
We learned a few things, we needed a few more traffic directors for you.
We, I don't know, next phone call I get about elementary pickup, I mean Eric's gonna be my first. Eric showed new skills, we didn't know. It was just great, yeah, I know. That was just a joke.
Kinda, no, it really, it was super functional, and I think having the kids off the street all the way to be able to be in a safe spot to, together, I think, was a good thing for them, so I think there's some good movement forward, but the assembly was just it was, it was great.
It was well done, it was very.
Well, the energy was like so good for the kids.
Appreciate that, we said our administrators and everybody has worked hard on really pushing in the spirit, we've kind of used an informal data source of how much blue we see around the campus as a way to see pride returned, we do feel that there is more blue year after year after year, the campus, through the hallways everywhere, we're seeing more and more royal blue and students believing into what we're doing, what they're doing.
Yeah, it's really good. I don't have a lot, I mean, well, Chris and I went to Wisconsin, had some of the best some of the best career in college readiness summits that I've been to so far, and some extremely important things for students that I would like to see implemented almost immediately, they cost nothing and they are focused around less punitive type of approach and a much more a, a privilege and or loss of privilege recognition, and the programs that they had in Wisconsin were, we got to hear from the students and we got to watch them live what they do, and it's always better to watch when students are doing things rather than having adults tell us what they're doing, and so we got to watch it in action and it was it was great, I think one thing that touched us most was they have a program where they celebrate those students who have made big strides, and we're not talking about the three-point, four-point students, we're talking students that make big strides, because everybody has, has a mountain to climb, and they just in turn watched those students become better and better, and a girl came up and spoke that was like, I got D's and F's, I was kind of like moved around from schools and she, you know, was their speaker at this event, and it was, you know, kind of a neat little thing they did, so great trip, and by the way, they have salmon in Lake Michigan, which I was thinking Vienna, and I didn't know that, but they're not really salmon, I just want to let you know. There are morph weird salmon that looks like a carp that comes out of the water, and we were not eating the salmon on the menu. It was weird, it was weird looking.
Yeah, in Grand Glen School District in Wisconsin, as a member of our, we're on building a career and college-ready environment, is a big work on building executive functioning skills, which is the book we read on the breakthrough years, and they had two really cool things, they called the Hawks Program, because they were the Blackhawks, and they had an AFRAM for it, but it was who improved by point seven-five GPA as a breakfast. Falling at the beginning of the year and at the next semester, looking at students who have made huge gains in their GPA. The other thing we've done, we've been discussing as a secondary admin team is they have privileges for students built around, so students can go to a senior area where there's like couches or they have senior, you know. And instead of having your remove from class and you no longer get to learn this week, and now you're further behind. Right, instead of removing students, which is against Washington State law now, removing students, you have to have a due process on how students learning environment, so there's a lot of laws regarding when students are removed from the learning environment. They have privileges built up, and the students were very clear, I think one student presented, he goes, yeah, that was a loss of privileges. So then they have the privileges that begin going away, so they have these rights that you can earn as more freedom around the campus that will go away as you earn and lose privileges.
Not impacting the learning.
Not impacting, nothing is directed to what's impacting.
Still, so it was, I love, it was a great conference. Thank you.
What we have, our superintendent report is, we launched our, we've begun our student advisory. We kind of laid out some basic information, the, this first meeting was more like kind of letting them know that we want to hear from them. We are part of a Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation group with, about all mother's school districts building student voice, so we have three student members who are traveling, working with other schools, on how those students are hearing from other students. Those students are, were with us at the first advisory, kind of just watching. We're gonna have our next one on November eighteenth. And where we're gonna start asking our student groups more and more information about what is it you want from your education, how can we help you achieve what you want from your education? I think I talked way too much at the first one. Ideally, it's gonna get to a place where the students are talking to us, they're feeling really confident, calling us what they need. And then we're coming back with information and feedback, and then our plan is that our three student reps that are part of our student-first project with Gates are gonna be coming to board meetings and doing board reports on what they've been hearing from students. This is kind of what we'd like to build as the foundation for our board reps. That we have the internal infrastructure and how our students are getting feedback from their peers. And then we have some students that got pulled into the Gates Foundation, who'll be doing the initial board reports. And then as that system gets established, then we'd like to begin picking our board reps, and then the board reps will be the ones that are officially running the communication between the student advisory and board. But we had our first student advisory meeting, I thought I guess it doesn't really matter what I thought. I, I, we did give those students a lot of information. But I would like to get to a point where the students feel like they're being heard, and I think that letting them know that we want to hear them, but I do think we need to get to the next meeting and the meeting after the meeting after to build trust that we are listening.
All good stuff.
And tonight, there was boys golf district, actually yesterday and today. And the unofficial results are, we took third as a team. And, and this year there was actually, I believe, four more teams added to our district. And, and Robbie Allen took fifth and Brody Palmer placed tenth. And they're, they're still waiting to know exactly how many allotments that our district's getting for golf this for state in the spring, and it depends on other districts. Like particularly the Eastern Washington schools of how many are gonna fill teams and and what have you, but the strong possibility that it looks like we'll have two for here to stay.
That's great, good for them.
I forgot, I had one more last thing, a shout out to FFA that's at Nationals for the poultry team, but also that Ms. Kershaw is getting recognized Friday, and Michael, can you say the award?
I knew you were asking, that's why I was actually trying to find it, but.
She's being recognized nationally, for I think about as big and wonderful of a thing as you can be recognized for within FFA, so just, I think that's pretty amazing, that's coming from our, our district at a national level, she's invested I feel like really her whole life in, into the program at large for, for kids, but hopefully, I'm sure they'll take some great pictures and everything of it, but Friday morning, it'll be fun for the group of kids in there to get to see.
Oh, yeah.
To see her recognized, so congratulations for her.
That's what day?
Friday morning, I think Meredith said that the ceremony for her was Friday.
The honorary American FFA degree is awarded to those who made outstanding contributions to our national FFA community.
Sounds sweet.
Wonderful.
So.
Wonderful, have a little video snippet we can get a hold of.
They did give us a press release, I think we shared the first one on our district's social media. So I'm confident Christie, well, I guess I'll see her, she flies on Saturday, and then we have to get a gear up and help her.
Yes, yeah.
And if you get bored tomorrow night, the girls play Montecristo at home. So it should, it should be good weather, I think. Fun, it'll be cold, but it'll be fun.
Okay, so we have donation report. So we, we already discussed these first few on here, I feel like we've done that.
These are just, this is the report that we asked for, right, so we said that anything that was under the five thousand that we wanted to see a report quarterly, if I remember right, yeah, and this is the follow-through. Appreciate it.
Something new on the, on the agenda, so I have to I don't know what we do with it.
I know, first. Oh, yeah, that's, yeah.
Okay. We are going to move into executive session for bargaining for thirty minutes with no action being taken. We'll come out and adjourn after that. Have a good night. Put your, put your hose insulators and, and. Put your, put your hose insulators and, and
Yeah.
the
I move to extend executive session by ten minutes.
Okay.
Seconded we will return at seven oh five, sorry, yeah, seven oh five.